This is Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 16th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaportecounty.org.
I'd like to start off by welcoming everyone to the August council meeting for the town of Trail Creek. Council, have you all had a chance to review your minutes?
I know.
Do you realize Christmas?
It is not time for public comment yet, sir, so if you could just hold off on that for a while.
We'll have to work on the street department doing that one tonight.
He's crowd controlled this evening. Any questions or comments, corrections for the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from July 19th meeting.
Thank you. A second?
Second, ma'am.
All in favor?
All right.
Hearing none, opposed, motion passes. Approval of the fund report is next, which is waiting for us tonight. She'll all take a minute and go through them.
I don't have the funding.
This was two hundred and fifty.
No, I didn't get it.
You know what? I didn't think you'd give me the packets because I was...
Oh.
So, all right, you've got all of them.
That's right, that's right. Josh, is there anything that stood out to you here on this one?
Just to point out that I have made several adjustments into the Fund 203. They were restricting NPH. That's for supplies only. The DLGF and the SBOA would like to see us separated this year. So, that's for road patch and things of that nature.
Okay, so that's why that's a negative balance?
Correct. And then the other item is Fund Number 249. One of them is this year, but just so y'all know, it's been opened.
It's been added.
Thank you.
And that number has changed from 91686 to 108,000. $108,000 per year.
Okay.
That's it. That's all I understand.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the fund report?
I make a motion to approve the fund report.
Thank you. Sharon, a second?
I'll start with that.
Thank you, Kyle. All in favor?
All right.
Motion passes. All right, and payment of the bills is next. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as we then...
Thank you. Second?
Second, ma'am.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any correspondence this evening?
No.
And I don't see Kate here. Was there an MSB report that she sent?
No, she will not be...
Hello, Mr. Willoughby, you're up next.
The only thing I have is follow-up on 28 East 11 Michigan Boulevard. As directed, after the last meeting, I sent a follow-up and gave it out in August. As you indicated, I received an email that said, "We're working on it and hoping to have it filed in a week." And she still does have some time under that, but it looks like property, they're certainly working on cleaning it up, but unless somebody else is aware, I haven't been filed to ask for the variance yet, so.
Okay.
Have we, another issue, have we reached out to ownership of Evergreen Plaza regarding the signs? We need to look at it in front of decoys. I could try. I know Mr. Herbach tried to reach out before. We have steel posts in front of Trail Creek Liquors, in front of decoys, and back to Enterprise Rental. It looks disgusting.
Is some of that an issue still with the state though?
No. As far as I know, it's up to, it was up to building ownership of Evergreen Plaza. I could be wrong.
I thought there was an issue that was ongoing.
There was a legal issue. I'm not sure if it's still...
But we need to address that. I'm getting calls, people stopping, knocking. It looks disgusting. I've got, like I say, two in front of Level 20 and one in back of Trail Creek Liquors and Enterprise Rental. Steel-type tubing, grass growing up around it. It looks hideous.
Is that some litigation with Dr. Cora?
That's what I thought as well.
Has anybody reached out to Dr. Cora?
That's what he was just asking someone about, yeah.
I mean, I could try.
Do you want to take it on?
I would like to see, hopefully, that cleaned up before it snowflies. How many years has that been there now? Five, six? That's on the tip of my hat. I know two years for him, I'd be doing 28, and there's another two and a half, three years that prior to that.
Prior.
I'll run it off in six years. First, they come in at back is Dr. Cora's problem. Somebody brought up litigation.
Thanks.
Mr. Herbach was going to follow through, they never heard nothing back on that, and it's back in the ballpark for the town attorney looking to. You want to try contacting Cora?
I can, although it'd be just as easy if you wanted to contact them and let them out there and file their custody ordinance.
And I know first they said after 20 was rebuilt, it was going to get put up. Blah, 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 blah.
But nothing's happened.
No, nothing's happened. So, we're going to address that, and it would be greatly appreciated.
I think I'd rather have you do it, only because this is not our first round of talks with him about this.
Okay.
So, I wonder what's at work, but yeah.
I'll let Mr. Herbach handle that then.
Not our first round of that.
So, is that signed in front of Trail Creek, or is that still supposed to be installed?
No clue.
That's what we're wondering, because we haven't heard anything on it.
No clue. It's, I mean, I've talked to Trail Creek Liquors when I was in there getting some ice a month and a half ago. I know nothing about it. Okay, thank you. I'm not going to argue with the guy there. Sorry, sorry. Nice, but I'm pretty sure it's the old skeleton from the Evergreen Plaza lighted sign that used to be out there. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I don't see how Trail Creek Liquors would know anything about that. And as for decoys, they parked their van there along 20 while the sign was down, but the steel structure was still laying on the ground. Now, the truck's back off of Highway 20, but the steel structure is still on the ground. The frame, the framework, sorry, not structure, framework. But hopefully, we can have that deregulated by snowfall.
That would be nice to have that fixed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else for this evening? All right, move on to engineering.
Okay. So, the permit at 312 Edgemore Drive, that drive was then completed by Mr. Huber's contractor, Indian Asphalt, took some pictures of that, saved that to our file. It was installed for the town's guidelines with snail and everything. Everything seems to be in a corner, it's drained properly, and there's an existing drain in this driveway, so we made sure that it was sloped that way, so the water would come back on this property per the standards. So, that one's done. Yesterday, I sent you guys a correspondence, get correspondence. I don't take one as a passion around. This is with respect to the paving votes that your street commissioner presented at the last meeting, that we're working on standardizing and getting something ready to send out to them, so that I'm sure that you guys are getting apples for apples with everything that they've provided. So, what you're looking at there, there should be enough for everybody to... So, what you're looking at there, I just had a problem figuring this out. So, what you're looking at, there's three pages that I have, and the top copy that you're looking at is our opinion of probable cost estimate, or OPC as we like to call that. And so, what I did was, we had multiple locations that are listed on the third page. If you go to the third page, you'll see the different sites that are listed, and those were based off of the information that Joe has kindly put together, and that he should have given you those quotes that we have received prior from ARS, Reef Riley, and Milestone. And so, what I was trying to do is, I went out outside with Joe, and we looked at all the locations, so I could make sure that I had a full grasp of the project scope limits, everything that he was trying to achieve. And I created a standardized form for it, basically, to where there's Site 2 and Site 3. If you look on the last page, you'll see Site 2, 2I, and 3I. Those sites, 2 and 3, 2 specifically, you could pave the road, or you could go with that infrared treatment. There's both options that would possibly work there. Site 3 was Red Oak Drive, was an additional area that we, me and Joe, looked at, and there was two spots that were pretty bad, and I think that infrared treatment would work well to kind of circumvent that until you guys could get around the paving road in the meantime. So, one of my thoughts when I put this together for you guys was, I wanted to create a base bid of the paving areas with alternates, so that you have options when you get the quotes back, so that if we quote the first three sites, 1, 4, and 5, which would be Greenwood Avenue, well in the two sections on the homeless road. So, those ones are the ones that I prioritized as your base bid, and then the other alternates would give you the options, either once you see those quotes numbers come in, to select, do you want to do Site 2 as alternate A, Site 2 and 3I as alternate B, and then 2I and 3I as alternate C. So, I was just trying to give you guys a multitude of options, because I kind of talked with Joe about the budget on that, and I'm not sure, I told him basically we were looking at probably $8,000. And so, I assess the cost for each of these, so your base bid is that top number, and then these other numbers would be added to that. Now, these are just our costs. As you know, right now, the market is very volatile. We've already seen, we were told last year there was going to be 10% inflation. We've seen as high as 40%, 25% to 40% in asphalt pricing and infrastructure. So, the good news is, is it looks like the market's bottomed out, so hopefully, these prices will hold, and they won't go up, and these prices will be good. But I wanted to put realistic cost to this for you guys, so you can truly understand what it's going to take to get that work done. And when I did this, when I was going through the scenarios of the best way to present this, so you guys could get bang for buck, that's why I isolated those three sites, because you could see what that number is. And then if those other ones come in at a more fair price than what we have in there, well, then, you know, that's a good thing, and then you guys can basically decide which way you would like to go with that, based on our recommendation and talking with Joe. So, the second page will be the itemized bid form, which is what we will send out to the contractors to fill in for quotes. Along with this, we'll have standardized documents that we will send them as far as like general conditions, supplementary conditions, you know, there's standardized forms, so like your Form 96, your No I.R. one, and those kind of things. There's a list of those that I put together. But then they'll provide these quotes based on this, and we can take the numbers and look at them, and you guys can decide what you want to do and move forward with that. So, my intention would be to send these out to Reef Riley, Milestone, ARS, and then as well as that, I would like to send it out to a company called Site Services, they're out of Griffith. They specialize in the infrared treatment as well. I've had experience with them, they do a good job, as well as that, they've gotten into doing mainline paving as well.
What, Roseanne Mee?
Site Services.
Site Services.
They're out of Griffith. So, it would just, because obviously, with the base bid and the bulk of the work being paving, you're going to be looking at getting those quotes from Milestone, Reef Riley, with the isolated alternates. ARS would not be able to bid that, but those bigger companies would still quote quotes from them, subcontractor quotes from them, obviously, to submit. And so, I think this will give you guys the best options for selection purposes, based on the costs that we have associated with it. And so, that's where I'm at with that, and if everything, if it's all accepting to you guys, I'd like to move forward with that, with sending those out as soon as possible, obviously, because we're in August, and you know, actually, time is of the essence with...
Do you need erosion?
Yeah, usually, they start on the plant the week of Thanksgiving, so we still have time, but it'd be nice to get moving on, you know, by September, obviously, to get them out there. When you're paving HMA surface, which is what you're going to be doing, your technical standards for that are in 45 degrees or rising. So, the higher you get in that temperature, obviously, the better, the better the curing process you're going to get with that asphalt. The lower you go in that temperature, not saying it's not going to cure as good, but the process isn't the same. It's just like concrete, you've got an ideal condition for concrete curing as well.
So, I move to have Austin Associates put these projects out for bids, so we can get something back and hopefully get this done before the asphalt mills close.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, a second?
Second, ma'am.
We have a cool second almost there. All in favor?
All right. Move forward.
The other thing I have to report on is me and Josh are working on getting the median crossing grants purchasers closed out. I did complete one of them to send to them. Of course, by the end of the, you've got to get the canceled checks, but everything for that is good to go, and I'm beginning to work on the 2019 one as well. So, I think within the next week, week and a half, I'll have that done. I'll send that over to her, and they usually have comments whenever you send it. I didn't build these jobs, so I'm taking the information that we have, putting it together the best as possible. It's standard procedure, so I think I have, I believe, based on doing the first one, I now have all the information that I need. If I don't, they'll tell me.
Right.
So, like I said, I'd say within the next week, by the end of next week, I should get some to Josh for the other purchase order, and once you send those over there, you know, whatever, like I said, whatever correspondence, Marcia and Brienne sends back, just forward it all to us, and we can make the corrections and send it back. But once you get them to them, it's usually pretty straightforward. The numbers just have to add up.
Right.
So, and based on the stuff that I have, the numbers add up, so I don't see any major hurdles or roadblocks with getting that done. And then as well as that, we'll have to work on getting your guys' asset management plan recertified by December 1st, so. But we have time for that. That's critical, but it's not anything that we can't kick out.
Okay.
So, we do that for San John, we do it for Long Beach, so I'm pretty well versed in that.
Okay, as long as you're not concerned.
No, no, we'll get, there's no I.T., if there's a me, and me's going to get it done.
Okay.
That's all I got for now.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one here from the park department, I assume they have not met still. How about our building inspector? You got a report for us tonight?
Actually, nothing for you this week.
Well, all right. Nice to see you.
I've got a little follow-up still on that one project I spoke about last month.
Okay.
I'm good, Chris.
Okay. Anything from our planning zone? Okay, and from the police department, Steve unfortunately could not make it this evening, but he did send an update saying that he, we have the cars, they're being outfitted, but the, some of the equipment is still on order, so we'll be behind on that part of it, but they are in process. Anything from our street department this evening? We just heard an earful, but come on up.
Very little, very little.
Okay.
I think we're moving forward with getting the roads paved. That actually makes me feel real good. I heard that one come through. The first dump truck should be, was supposed to be done by Friday, we're going to pick it up Monday. They had an issue with the switch, so they ordered in the switch. It's on them, not, no problem, but it hasn't come in yet, so hopefully, we'll be going and picking up that dump truck on Thursday. The reason the flowers on Great Observance is, ever since you guys purchased these trucks, they were prided on being the easiest to install, take off the plows and everything, and they've always had issues in doing so. I've gotten it down to a half hour to do it. They've had up to six hours to try to get the plow on before. We are taking this dump truck down with us, and they're going to show us how to do this the proper way.
You're talking about the front plow or the belly plow?
The front plow.
Okay.
And this one actually has some bolts missing and a broken hose. I don't know, belly plow right now, that we just discovered after taking stuff over to the dump, so it's going to be left down there to get those things repaired in order for it to be ready to go. But we, there's potential of the truck coming back Thursday. If not, it'll probably be the beginning of the week, next week. I'm actually kind of excited to get that one back. Aside that, they came back and cut all those thunks down over on Shaw Parkway over there. Dave went out and spread all the malt chow. I think it looks pretty good over there. There is an issue over at the edge of Menke and Greenwood.
Oh, man, that's not bad.
I was hoping you were going to say something about that this evening. I'm not messing, I did, or something else. We dug down and found the south side of a drain pipe that has been covered under four feet of dirt for some time. That intersection flooded this spring, and we pumped the water to the other side, so it wasn't flooded well. We went out there, poked around the north side, and found there's a, like a 12-inch covert pipe down there. Went over to the south side, started feeling around, didn't find anything. Got the location services out there, got it all located, so we wouldn't hit anything, went out there with the backhoe, and dug down and found the covert pipe about four feet down. So, I don't know if people were dumping stuff there, there was bricks in it, all kinds of crap. So, while we went around for the streets, I asked them to go over there with me to see what has to be done. We put orange fence along the roadway, if anybody's been over there, they've noticed it, and there has been a number of some eyes that have hit the fence already, going into fiber rock. So, we want to make contact.
Yeah, so, yeah, so he dug up and he found an existing on the, would it be the north side?
Yeah, we found it on the north side and finally dug it out on the south side.
There's a concrete head wall with the culprit pipe in it, and then daylight's on the other side of the road, obviously. Looks like the pipe is still functional and salvageable condition, so I told Joe that, you know, depending on how you guys want to handle it, obviously, it looks like on the north side of the road, you just need to do some grading around there, clean that area up, and I told him I'd recommend putting some brick wrap around that to do what you need it, so that it stands out, and then that will help shore up the edge of that road, because with that pipe being exposed, if you don't do something there, it's going to start to wash out, and then the road will fail. So, I think, you know, it can be fixed fairly easily. We would need to do a simple, small survey of the area, just to check the grades. I told Joe, you know, we could, however you guys want to handle it, it's something that you could quote if he felt comfortable handling it himself with the equipment you guys have in the house. We could do a simple survey and lay out some grades for him, and you guys could get the materials yourself, and they could do, you guys could do the work internally, but that's completely up to you.
So, one thing I want to mention, and I believe it's up there on that, on the wall, I want to say that that area is where the road is going to go in for the development that Woodruff is putting in there.
Going in that direction?
Yes, I believe right there at that intersection is where the road's going to cut in there.
Okay.
It should be on that, right there.
On this one right here?
Yeah.
I was trying, or earlier, I was trying to see, and yes, I see it now.
Yep, that's right, right there is where that road's going to cut in.
Yeah, literally, right where that.
Really? Yep.
Where the three of them meet. However, still, I mean, currently, we're going to, how long, what's our potential timeframe on that?
I don't know.
That, I...
Exactly. Well, but something has to be done, because we're going to get erosion. We found the path of where the water flowed.
So, do you feel like you and your staff are able to handle that on your own, or do you feel like we need to have somebody else come in to do that?
Or we talk with Woodruff, the developer, and be like, listen, this is what we have going on, I know that you're cutting the road in here, do you want to help us out with this in the meantime, before you get that done?
Absolutely.
I think that would be the best course of action, obviously.
That would be, but I want to...
Because that way, he's, you know, he can, yeah, right, he's got the equipment.
Well, right.
He can do what needs to be done and potentially not have anything hinder what he's got going on in the future.
And that's fine. I just, I wanted to make sure we didn't have any other flooding issues. You know, that's what the problem was at the time, and obviously, when they do the whole site, to put in road and everything, all that's going to be mitigated anyhow in the future. But for right now, like I said, it was a free thing that that flooded like that day. We had a big thaw, and there was an emergency system coming through, so, and the lower ground was still frozen, that's why it flooded. But now we found the other end of it, so now we just want to try to take care of getting, you know, so that we don't wash out the road.
Yeah, I think the best course of action would be to get ahold of him and see what he, how he feels about that.
So, Chris, if you could do that?
Yeah.
That would be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Honestly, oh, did, well, I know we had an issue with emails. I did send out an email about getting something put together for the fall leaves picked up.
Okay, I have to, I have to talk to Josh to get my passport reset.
And that's why I said I forgot about that, so I believe that's, I believe that's all the stuff we had to do this evening.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments for Joe? All right, hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, anything from Nercy tonight?
No.
Okay. Under old business, we have the street improvement products for 2022 and 2023, I believe that's what you talked about already in your report, so we can move on past that. Next up, we have new business, the agreement for leaves.
I just looked at this, and I was like, oh, actually, you said this. I spoke to you in chat already. Josh had gotten the copy. I did send it back to the city, because Mr. Willoughby's name wasn't on there, your name wasn't on there, Josh's name wasn't on there, and they did have kind of a lobby park in one spot, so.
All right.
It was the...
So, it's the same agreement they have with that park, basically?
Right, it's the same agreement they issued for us.
It was not editable, so that's why you were sending it back, and you realized this would have passed.
Right, it would have been here, and I had hoped he would have got it back to me today, and I would have brought it with, but he did not get it back yet. But, and that is again, the $10,000 of the city. No use of our loader over there. The other gentleman got back with me finally, and his other site is just on this side of the highway, right by that house I've earned.
Yeah, okay.
By Bonita, and he was saying $11,000, we'd still have to take our loader out there to push it. And I told him I'd bring it up to capital this month, just because he did finally tell me, and I did not tell him that we had an agreement potential with the city, because I was kind of shaking. I haven't heard anything from them until right after he talked to me, so.
Okay.
As soon as we get that finalized.
But it looks like it will be $10,000 there?
Yes, I think it is $10,000 on there. Like I said, I know Josh had a copy of it earlier, so, and actually, you have it, don't you worry about it.
So, and we were paying $8,000 before, right?
Eighty-five hundred last year, that was.
So, it's, you know, $15,000.
We went to the same person, and he was talking about going up to 18.
Yeah, yeah.
He was driving that last year.
He thinks he's got the game in town, so we're going to...
Yeah, so, and it's just smarter to do it with the city. I mean, we don't have to mess with our loader or anything like that.
Yeah, agreed. It'll be worth the extra cost. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, moving on to public comment. Any public comment this evening? We'll have you introduce yourself and state your address if you would.
I'm at 233 O'Millwall. First off, I want to thank Joe and the company for what they've done on Shipala Parkway. We worked on it, they bought a lot of mall, running the stump and all that. All... Also, today, kind of my, very good. I got to talk to the owner of the pool that area, Derek Eric. He was out there actually looking at it. I was on my way from work and I stopped and talked to him and he liked what he saw there. And so he was kind of out, that's pretty much the end of it right there. And so, well, depend, I said, we did propose at the last meeting about trying to get some trees there. But also, we don't need to do a little bit of cleanup on your side of the property. And because there were some trees and shrub that were right against the border. And he thought about putting down all the shrub and then the tall pieces he wants himself. And maybe I'll help him to cut all the rest of the trees down there on his property. So that would kind of make way for the planting of trees that we can get back. So a couple of questions we have is, one, are we still going down that path? And two, we kind of know what timeframe we need to aim for.
Well, I think before we can say that we're going to go down that path, we need to make sure that we have the funding to do that. I mean, that's, that's obviously our biggest holdup. Yes, there is ARP funding coming in, but that's already earmarked for some other projects that we've worked on and that we've been trying to work on for several years. So, so there are several things that we've already got in mind for that. And Greg, it sounds like a lot of money, $400,000, but when you start going into major projects, it's really not. So a lot of it will depend on if we have funding available for it.
There any other option that we're not aware of that might be earmarked for that or vote for that?
I don't think we'd do it this time. So it may be something that, you know, right now, we're at a standstill and a holding position. And then as we can go forward and as we have the money to, it might be something that we do a little bit at a time.
Okay. So what do you suggest? We do keep it bringing it up or keeping it alive or we just kind of wait to hear?
I will, I will leave that up to you. You know, if you feel like we're not doing anything or you think it's falling off our radar, please absolutely come back to us. But it's something that we'll have to keep in the back of our minds, I think, at this point, until we have the funding available to move forward.
Well, I just want to, you know, we do appreciate what has been done so far. And like I said, talking with Eric, we are going to continue it forward till they're all clean. And that, that will make it ready for whatever we can move on that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah. Kid Owens, I want to go back up to what Tom said. We do thank you a lot, the Town and Trail Creek Street Department for the work that you've done there. We're most appreciative and just wanted to say thanks. Go from there. Let's take in touch.
Thank you. Glad to hear it. Any other public comment this evening?
Yes, please.
If you'll approach the podium, introduce yourself and state your address for us.
Jimmy Campbell. I live at 621 Black Oak. We've got a ditch, or somebody's got a ditch on the east side that's been let go even to a point where some of the people have put up privacy fences on both sides. And now we're dealing with creatures back there. And just last week, we pulled out two, one groundhog and one huge raccoon. We've got a lot of kids down there, grandkids. And I understand that that ditch at one time was actually being mowed by some of the folks down there that abut up. And now even NIPSCO or their contractor dumped all their limbs and everything. It's, it's terrible in there. And it's been let go for a long time. I've been there 18 years and I've never seen anybody in there working on it. I don't know if the street department does.
Do we know who that property belongs to by chance? Pull up Beacon. Joe?
I pulled up Beacon and it's property line to property line.
Okay.
I went back there from our pump station, because it's right behind Napa. And I took the weed tractor and I made a path into the ditch. I found two pieces of garbage in that ditch. One was a piece of styrofoam near with some sort of a bag. Got those out. The drainage is wide open. I could walk straight back through into there. I walked back about 20 feet. There was like a tree that had fallen in there. I spoke with previous commissioners. They have never mowed, maintained, or did anything in that ditch. That is the NIPSCO right away, what have you, between the properties. There are some residents that have built fences completely across that, which has been up for a very long time. So I noticed at the north end of it by Wellness, there's a chain link fence that goes all the way across it. So, but I walked 20, 30 feet down into it and it was open. So it's got to be doing its, I mean, there's nothing like the one over on Menke that was blocked. The water flow is still there. Everything is still there. You know, it's doing its job. Except, yeah, there's weed trees, trees all growing on the sides.
Is this the one that goes in, from Black Oak to Pine Tree that you're referencing?
Yes, it goes to...
Right in, right in between the homes there?
Yes.
So it's just a few doors down from you, right?
Well, I actually live on the opposite side.
Yeah, he lives on the right side.
Animals are running into my backyard, so. And I'm assuming that they're all coming from that ditch because the neighbors said they saw them go in there, so. I don't know what can be done about it, but...
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Maybe almost we have to go to NIPSCO with them.
If it's NIPSCO's easement, maybe we could reach out to them.
Is it here or is it...
I'm trying to see where you're at here. Okay. There's Black Oak.
On this side.
That ditch?
It's right there by the apartments.
Right. It runs all behind the apartments. It's right here.
And when you reback out, there's directly north of the pump station, correct?
It goes behind these houses and it drains in and it comes over here and drains into that stuff for Highway 20 from Hammers.
Yeah, it drains into the ditch line.
Right.
Some of that that's back there, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that we said that actually the drainage would be worse if it was mowed on a regular basis.
That's way before my time. I could not comprehend that.
And I know that ditch also took care of...
We may have to have engineering studies done again on that area as well.
Yeah, I can't speak without looking at it.
Right. So if we can show you after the...
It's a ditch. If it's got overgrowth, I mean, water will still drain through that, obviously. You'd have something in there damaging it. It doesn't have the water. But if it's NIPSCO's, the first path would be...
That was the ditch line, see, right behind every plasma. But then we bought their turkey and cutter for us to cut it. So we cut that ditch down, leading all the way down to the pump house.
By Napa?
Yeah. But that one section we were talking about...
Is between properties.
It's between property lines. That's going to be a NIPSCO easement, probably. I can recommend to get a...
Is that area right there by Napa?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the motor pump station's built north of all the...
Guarantee the property line probably goes right to the middle of the ditch from both sides.
As far as I've been, we never cut that.
And I spoke with, yeah, I think you're right, Spence, and you stated that they never cut it.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
I think it was that long area.
We did the long area that runs east to west, right behind BMV, leading all the way down to Napa.
But even that, we were told if we do it too often, that it actually hinders the drainage instead of helping.
So that ditch is back here and the property line's actually, the property goes past, because there's the ditch right here and that property line goes past the ditch, actually.
I mean, the DSA is putting up fences.
It's easement, but the people do actually own that property.
So it would be the property owner's responsibility.
It is the property owner's responsibility.
I hate to say that I have an easement on my own property. And I still maintain the property that I, that I live on, you know, even though, even though I have the easement.
Yeah, they just have the right to be there.
They can just come on the property whenever they need to, to do repairs or whatever maintenance they need to do. So it is the property owner's responsibility.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's exactly what we did shows.
Okay. And we can show you after the meeting so that you can see exactly what we're talking about. Any other public comment this evening? Hearing no further public comment, we'll move on to the clerk's comment.
Okay, just busy, busy training Kenny. She's doing excellent. Right now, we're doing something different than our daily operations, trying to stay out of that. But we are doing sort of an internal audit on our meetings and our meeting releases, trying to get caught up on all those. City View, the contract the software for the building permit and the code enforcement. I think Mr. Framel must have went on vacation, but he did assure me in an email today that he will get that to me soon. And I'll forward it to Chris. And then the last thing is ADA compliance. I know Haas and Associates had agreed to, they discussed it and agreed to help us with our ADA plan.
Wonderful.
So I don't know where to start with that, but...
I think we have someone who can answer that question there.
Yeah, so I talked to my associates about it after we had the above correspondence and said that we're going to be handling a house. So I just need to do some coordination with the company and get things moving on that as well.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
All right.
Any council comments this evening?
So, Lenzio?
It's like crickets up here, guys. I'd just like to thank our entire staff at the Town of Trail Creek for doing such a great job, working together and making sure our town continues to move forward. If nothing, if there's nothing else to add?
Move to a chair.
Thank you. A second? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. We'll see you next month.